We'll begin with Austin.
Lord, we come before you tonight as servants of you, servants of the public. We are humbly asking for the wisdom and guidance to express your will and do it with wisdom and skill, and above all serve you. In the name of the Lord, we pray, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call me the order, we'll have a roll call.
Allers.
Present.
Ozleton.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Neely.
Present.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Here.
Spicer.
Present.
Present.
And the court.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
We'll make a motion to approve.
Spicer.
Yeah, that sounds right. You can't tell them apart.
These items, we have, I want to introduce our new Public Works Director, Kyle Brimmer.
Thank you, thank you. Kyle Brimmer, it's good to say, City of Jefferson now, I've been saying City of Fulton for a long time, and it's good to work where I reside and live, grow up, and got three kids going to school at, and it's where my Public Works journey started. So just really kind of stunned to be coming home to do what I really enjoyed doing, and that's Public Works. You know, thanks to my wife and my kids, they're ecstatic, you know, I get to, you know, 10-minute drive now, be here and try to make an impact in the public works realm right here, where, like I said, growing up here, know so many people here, and I'm just really, really thrilled about it. So 30 years ago, you know, was my very first job as a high school kid, was with the City of Jefferson, painting curves and mowing grass along the streets and everything else. And then following year, working in the survey department, it was amazing today to meet again one of our amazing employees, Rick Hurst, who's been here for a long time, who was working 30 years ago back then, and just kind of amazing to come home and now be working again with Rick, at least for a little bit. And so, met a lot of amazing people today, and look forward to serving the council, the citizens, and the employees, so thanks for having me.
Hey, we're so glad that you've joined us and look forward to your serving and working with us. We have opportunity for public comment.
Someone send up.
Everybody in the street, let's go. No public hearing, no appointments, presentations, staff, first one is on the River Market. Ms. Sensi. And Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you. Give Doris a moment to get her PowerPoint up. While she's doing that, I'll kind of give a brief introduction. I know you've all heard, kind of, our plan is to give you all continuous updates of the River Market and Chestnut Street as it progresses currently. And a reminder, it's we've got a $2.1 million community revitalization grant that we're leveraging against ARPA funds, funds from the county and funds from the state. So all in all, we have about a $7.2 million project that we have available for funding, and we have about $6.8 million worth of funding. So we have a little bit of cushion in there. The River Market is currently out for bid, so some of that construction cost will become more clear once we receive the bids back in. We have a pre-bid meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, March 12th. Bid opening is March 27th. So that puts us having some sort of groundbreaking in April, and then hopefully we can start that construction in April, which is well before that July 2025 deadline that we have with the state of Missouri, before they could exercise the right of reentry. So I don't want to jinx anything, but we're running smoothly, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, but we're just building in that buffer for the construction phase of the project. A little update on the demolition. We had a change order, we never closed out the change order for the Saddle Tree Factory. Premier demolition is currently cleaning up scrap piles at the MSP site. There was a lot of rubble pile and scrap metal that was left from the tornado that just got piled up. So they've been working on that this week. We have some rain coming in, so we don't think the demolition of the wall will start until next week. We've tentatively heard March 11th, but that is contingent on weather. So you'll start seeing that wall come down most likely next week. So if you get any phone calls, that's been planned, is the wall that we have, parts of the wall that we have discussed for probably about the past six months, that hasn't changed all that much. So the phase part of the projects is we've broken this down into two phases, if you can remember, the River Market because of the grant mechanism. We've kind of separated that out into what we're calling Phase One. But then we also have Phase Two, which is the Chestnut Street expansion. There is a little bit of the grant funds tied into that, but because we had, the county was contributing to Chestnut, the state of Missouri has contributed to Chestnut, we broke those separately. The design work on Chestnut is anticipated to be complete in July, so it's lagging a little bit behind the River Market, but not too far behind what we're concerned about it. So that will be helpful to provide service to the River Market, and also one health lab, which I don't know if you've driven by that site lately, but they have steel up and it's actually starting to look like a development project. So we're excited about that as well. Before I turn it over to Bob, who Bartlet and Wes has been such a great partner to work with throughout the duration of this project, they knew that we had a tight timeline, and they really wrote, Bob and his team really rose to the occasion to expedite some of the processes, and were super responsive in any of the back and forths we have. We also had a lot of internal collaboration. We often talk about silos, but with this project, we really like mowed down the silos. We've been working with the Parks Department, with Aaron and Brian and their team, and David Bangy and Public Works for the Chestnut. We even brought in fire for some of our, we did like preemptive plan review. And one of the things that we incorporated, I know last month was AED, or the Hart Month. So one of the suggestions that we should put an AED cabinet at the River Market, so we did go ahead and incorporate that in the design work, so there'll be an AED cabinet in the bathroom. We also communicated a lot with members of the community, again, going forward with that almost over public engagement, to make sure that we're constantly being receptive to that feedback. So I'm really appreciative of the team that has contributed to this project, and we'll continue to work towards that. We also have that Phase Three that you've heard me talk about a little bit, and we've talked about a little bit more, and Bob will show you some of the renderings and the kind of the concept that we have going forward. Phase Three is really that connectivity and that trail build-out. That's the whole point of that community revitalization grant, was to connect to the surrounding neighborhood. We wanted to make sure that we put as much funding into the actual pavilion facility as we could, so we're going to go back and get the trails later with future opportunities. We have identified a land and water conservation fund grant, which is the Outdoor Recreation Legacy Partnership. It's a 50-50 cost share grant. It's up to 15 million, so if we can come up with 15 million on our end, whether through public funds, private funds, different layering of resources, that means we could have $30 million to build what I would call a riverfront. So we could connect to Adrian's Island, or I'm sorry, Deborah Cooper Park from MSP, and then hypothetically, you could ride off the Katy Trail to, through the riverfront all the way to Ellis Porter Park. So everything would be connected. So that's kind of, we plan that for '27, '28, that's a future layout, but we start working on those things now, so we can be ready for when the grant applications are open. I'll go ahead and turn this over to Bob, and he'll tell you more about the project and the process.
All right. Thank you, Rachel, and good evening, everyone. It's good to be here, good to be back. Last time I was here, the images you see on the screen were actually here, those are from the fall, and really, the basic concept of the site doesn't, hasn't really changed that much, so we left those in there. But what you're going to see tonight is really some revisions about the actual pavilion itself, and again, because of Rachel's creative work with funding, and trying to prioritize the River Market first and then trails later, we're actually able to shift to where, last time I was here, we were talking about trying to make sure that the pavilion could eventually have doors or ability to be enclosed, at least for like a three-season use, but they're actually now in the base bid, it includes that. So the next couple of images, this is again the same from the fall, the concept is essentially the same layout. But as I move along here, maybe a reminder, this first image, what we're building is up on the upper left in this rendering here, and essentially, we've designed the site such that it can expand, you know, should future market expansion occur, a secondary building that could be repeated more or less, could be on-site and then other buildings as well. But just wanted to kind of give you that reminder that we have this site planned out to kind of keep expanding, should the city desire to do that. And then let's get in the building. So this is the pavilion rendering that is out to bid right now. As you can see, there's four kind of large, you know, glass doors on each side, and then on the ends, those are person doors that basically will, the traffic, if it's in a market mode, someone is selling products, they're walking more or less through the middle of the building, through the person doors and the garage doors, I'll call them, or what's wide open, and make it more like an open-air pavilion with the vendors, you know, backed up to the facility. So more or less 16 vendors could back up to this facility. And then you'll see in a few more renderings here, you've got some pretty big kind of brick fascia there on the front, I wanted to share a little bit about that, because we'll get into what that is in a moment, but we do envision those to likely contain some kind of public art or signage of the park facility as well, but right now, that's out to bid just as a building. But those brick facades essentially will probably be covered with something either more artistic or signage. Restroom facility as well, I won't get into too much on that, but it is a dual restroom, but also a family restroom, and then a utility room, and I'll share a little bit about that here in a moment. This image, I'm not going to concentrate on much, in case you had questions, I have it in there. This is actually an aerial image of the prison in 2013, which, I guess to me, the surprising thing here was only 12 years ago, the buildings were still there, where the site is going. If I press that stuff there.
Yeah.
Oh, look at that, that's nice. The, so the site is right about here that I've circled on the screen, but as you can see, buildings weren't present in 2013. Any questions we want to talk about, about the prison or history, I wanted to keep that in the presentation, in case you want to go back to that. This again is the same basic kind of site rendering, but what it has on it is the actual building designs for restroom and an open-air pavilion with the doors. And then this is an image with it kind of in use. One of the things, you know, as we looked at other potential farmers markets type facilities, like up in Columbia, for instance, and one of the first regrets they had was ability to expand. In this case, the green lawn area right here is where, you know, again, tent facilities are normal, other types of outdoor marketplace can be held while we're in our first phase, but again, that's that location of future expansion, should that be necessary down the road. And then as you can see, some kind of either trailers and food trucks along this kind of outer loop road, and I'll talk a little bit about that here in just a moment. That's kind of been part of the concept all along. Again, this is looking back towards the top of the hill, Lafayette's kind of in the background, a little bit hard to see without any sketch-ups of buildings on top of the hill, but you can see the cul-de-sac here on the bottom where Chestnut is. What I can also point out, right about here is where the trail will end with this project, it's just going to go to the cul-de-sac. So in the future, it would go on beyond, and I'll talk a little bit about that here in a moment as well. But we've kind of broken that out as Phase Three, something for the future. Okay, some more imagery here to show you what this looks like, and we've got some, again, trucks and vendors possibly using this site, just in some of these renderings, I'm going to click through these pretty quickly. This one's kind of interesting because of the use of the pedestrian crosswalk. So essentially, this site has been designed essentially in half, and so the half that's closest to Chestnut is the half where the market can operate and where parking and vehicular traffic can happen. You'll see some, there's some Type III barricades right here, just showing an indication of we want to be able to block off, these are raised crosswalks. By the way, great input from your team, this is a great idea from David Bangy, actually, to raise those crosswalks, much like Washington Park Ice Arena has now. And that does create that little bit of a delineation of pedestrian and vehicular parts of the assets. So as we get a market happening, for instance, we can set up barricades, and then everything from those barricades on in the loop road is all pedestrian, including the food truck usage and all the interaction with guests. Okay, this is the same kind of image of the other crosswalk on the other side of the building, but again, everything to the right is pedestrian, everything to the left is vehicular, in this particular kind of use, and that plaza area is wide-open pavement there for folks to congregate, tables and chairs, things like that. All right, going to keep moving here, but stop me if you have any questions? Yes?
What's the size of that building? How big is that building?
The size of the building, it is, it's been long enough now, I've kind of just forgotten the details in my head, but I think it's... I think the garage doors are 18 feet, so I think it's about 70 by 90, something like that, but it's been long enough. Councilman Spicer, I've forgotten the square footage off the top of my head, sorry about that. We finished the plans back in January, and then kind of been working towards bidding, and just kind of lost some of those details in my memory. But the image on the screen now shows the, obviously, the River Market on the right, and then the future connection of trail to the west. So this, this location here is at the end of, this is Lafayette Street, and this actually has been a potential location to get over to Adrian's Island, actually, for 10 years, that was one of the four concepts that we had originally to get to the island. And then we've kind of placed that, this in rendering form, so that people can kind of see the three-dimensional look of how this all connects in the future. So again, it's labeled Future Bridge there, and then Deborah Cooper Park is in the distance. So if you look where the Capitol is, that's the Bicentennial Bridge right there in the distance, and then the 13 acres of Deborah Cooper Park that's developed essentially is right here, and then the rest of the 30 acres of the island is what we would be connecting with this in the future. Again, future phase, but something we want to make sure is able to connect in the future.
So the wooded area down there by Adrian's would be part of this connection, so where there's a path now, I think it's more like a vulted path?
Right. Yeah, actually, what happened back when we built the park and the Bicentennial Bridge, the construction road actually is what people are walking on.
Right.
Through the woods, where you might, if you've been out there, you'll notice the Eagles Nest Monument and so forth there. That's actually the construction road, and then this doesn't follow exactly that, because of, you see the curvature on it, but eventually, what happens is, yeah, it just lines right up with where that is. Yep. Yeah, there's a pretty big slough and big drainage way that comes kind of out from, I think it's Jefferson Street, I think is where the culvert comes across the railroad, and then that slough and that creek is running toward you in this picture, and it outlets pretty much right at that curve on the bridge. Okay. All right, keep going. Oh, that's just a closer view of the same thing, but again, just trying to show that future connectivity, again, in a future phase, that's still possible. The demo of...
Of the wall?
Yep.
With that future phase of that bridge, do you see the faster pace of permitting for that now that we, since we already have a bridge? That, you know, it's not going to...
Boy, you'd hope so. We learned a lot of lessons, and the people, the people who learned those lessons are all still around, and so we, I'm sure we can figure it out, again. I won't say it's really fast, but... Yeah. Okay, but again, that's future phases, and again, your talented staff is working on ways to try to line up potential grant opportunities for that. The yellow indicates the wall demo that's beginning even somewhat this week, and I think March 11th.
March 11th.
Next week is kind of more tentative for the more full demo of the yellow. The orange is just indicating somewhat where the rubble, actually, the 2019 tornado, the wall was essentially collapsed there by the tornado, and so just indicating there, again, some of the work to be done to clear the site.
And what's the use of the materials that they're going to...
Yeah, so the wall itself is actually owned by the state of Missouri, so currently, currently the plan is that we'll have Premier knock it down, and they're going to haul it up to the state site and dump it for reuse. If they don't say they want it within 48 hours, then it becomes our problem to deal with, but we've kind of got a few contingencies depending on what we're left with.
I know that's been questions I've been getting, citizens are concerned, and we'd like try to use that, repurpose that.
Yeah, and also, like, keep in mind, and if you go down there, which is kind of hard to go down there now with the site, but that's, that lower wall is rubble fill, so a lot of times people look at it and they think there's solid limestone blocks, but it really is, it's almost like, it's not quite a veneer, but a fascia with a lot of just smaller stones in the middle of it. So when the tornado knocked it over, and you can see like the edge, you can see there's still a lot of rubble, so we're not sure how much is, can be repurposed, but we'll give it a shot.
All right. What's that?
You can tell how big it is now.
Oh, yeah.
Just looking, 50 by 80?
50 by 80, all right. Thank you, Clint. Yep, I'll have to get up closer to the screen to see that. I wanted to share this, just as, again, a basic floor plan of a pavilion, you know, it's not really that exciting, it's an open pavilion, so there's a lot of concrete floor space, you know, for the use of event space and with vendors. But what happened during some of the design process with your team, by going to the base bid, including the doors essentially, this building, you know, essentially becomes an enclosed space, and so sprinklers had to be added to the project. And so to do that, we needed to, you know, get some kind of room set up to allow for that sprinkler system to be heated enough to not freeze, and so that actually became the sprinkler room, which was the first addition, I'll call it, but then some of the park staff had a lot of great ideas about the use of the facility, and these three corners also now mimic that one corner, and those are going to be storage closets essentially, to keep the main event floor free. So chairs, tables, things like that for events are going to be stored in those four-corner rooms. Just kind of give some kudos there to the team here at the city to, as we develop this further. Again, this is the breezeway, is the person doors are kind of going, you know, left and right into the screen here, that's where the, I'll call it, the guests are walking through in a vendor market-type setup. And again, you have 16 vendors set up in this eight-door system on the outside. Another image of that building, again, this is something that's been added, this is actually is going to be bid as an alternate, but we are putting the opportunity for heaters in this space, again, because of Rachel's innovation and ways to bring more dollars to the River Market itself, we're trying to make it as nice as possible, obviously not on wood, and hopefully the bids come in really great, and we have enough left for heaters. Fans, the fans that you see there are base bid items as well, just to keep air moving in the summertime. Okay, restroom facility, not too exciting to really talk about, but I wanted to share this because, again, another idea, that some vendors in our community have been involved in this process, they started asking about events that they wanted to hold here, and asked about a mop sink, asked about an ice machine, you know, things that they would like to see if they're holding events, and sure enough, we were able to accommodate that. This room on the upper left of this image is a utility room, so we do have an ice machine and a mop sink in the base bid, as well as a, you know, family restroom with full adult-sized accommodation, changing table, as well as the dual restroom facility. So again, a lot of good input gathered over the last few months from your team, as well as a couple of different food truck and event planners in our community. So this is maybe one of the final images here, but I wanted to share this because I think I mentioned earlier, you know, if we block off the two crosswalks, that's indicated by those cones. Again, this northern part of this image, I guess it's actually northwest, becomes kind of more of the pedestrian part of the campus. And then also, again, vendor and event planner-driven comments, these five blue circles indicate essentially RV hookups, there are going to be water hookups, as well as three elements of electrical hookup, including 50 amp service, like an RV. So that will accommodate those food trucks who wanted something special there, so that they have that ability to serve and not have to run, you know, extension cords all across the site. So that's kind of a neat option that's been added as well. And then maybe one more reminder, again, there's this blue kind of line down on the bottom is that old storm tunnel, that's been there for, I would say, literally a little over 100 years, and I've got, I think, the next photo is some pictures and compliments of David Bangy, who went spelunking for us, and this is an image inside that tunnel. Again, this is a very old structure, and I thought just of general public interest, you might be interested in seeing the photo on the left, which appears to us, you know, being in the storm, in infrastructure business, we don't usually put like walls inside of storm sewers or big doors, but it appears that that large steel gate must have been there. It looks like it's on a hinge, kind of in the upper third of that, which makes sense that a big storm would basically open it up, and then it's so heavy it closes, and then prison escapes cannot occur. So that's what we believe it is, I don't have any documentation of that, I just think it's kind of a fun, you know, local history thing to be thinking about.
Driver.
I didn't call Mark, I thought of him, I should have done that. But very just interesting thing to find inside of an old structure like that, but we are, we are leaving this structure alone, there is, I call it, there are two taps, if you will, into it that we need to make with our storm sewer, kind of away from this exact location, but I wanted to share that with you. And then again, we're out for bid right now, again, very quick timeline here, as we've been heading towards making sure we hit construction in July, we think we can probably get there by May. And then Chestnut, actually, our final design, we're going to be submitting at the end of this month, and then kind of anticipate bidding in the May timeframe, so just wanted to give you an update on where that's at as well. Those are separate bids, there's a lot more to be discussed about Chestnut if you're curious. I gave a presentation to the county commission because they were interested, their funding is in this, but a lot of utility work to happen along Chestnut with and in advance of the construction. So with that, I'll stop and see if there are any other questions you might have.
Questions? With the food truck, electrical and water hookups, has there been thought, because I've mentioned this before, about RVs going there, renting out for the night, or, you know, a couple nights at a time, that be coordinated through our parks, or is that...
Yeah, and that's something that, so because of all the grants and the different money, that's one of the reasons why I'm leading the project versus just turning it over to parks. But once we build this, I'm going to go, here you go, Aaron and Brian, it's your park to operate, and I think they've already, I just spoke with Aaron last week, and they had already started discussions on how they were going to lease the facility space out and kind of plan for the operational part of it.
You know, I know there were some concerns from some, this project, but it's really coming together, it's really coming together quickly, and it's a great, great asset to this community on the east side, so kudos to all the staff, thanks, Brian, for, you know, kind of leading the charge on this as well, and for all your efforts on grant binding. Obviously, part of the West, part of our city with a lot of projects, so thank you. Obviously, part of the west, part of our, our city with a lot of projects, so thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you both, thanks. Excellent.
Appreciate it.
Hey, financial update, Ms. Perry?
The first page you have in your packet relates to sales tax collections. This will be sales tax for the fiscal year '25. It does include currently the receiving period of January and February. And as you can see, the general sales tax is just slightly above projections for those two months. And the other three sales tax lines are below projections for those two months. So, as we progress, we will continue to monitor those and make sure that the numbers come up to where we had anticipated they would. And if that doesn't occur fairly soon, we will be bringing that back to council for discussions in regards to, to how to handle those. Be happy to answer any questions there. The next page is the revenue model. This revenue model was as of January 31st. So, the sales tax overage that you see is the $12,971 from the previous page, just the one month of reporting. Nothing really to report here at this time. We have started tracking these for fiscal year '25, but again, a vast majority of things that occurred in November and December related to the old fiscal year, so they would have been pushed back to FY '24. So this is really just getting us started in fiscal year '25 as we move forward. We've got two pages of detail there for each line, but again, nothing really of, of concern at this point. And the last page that you have is an estimated fund balance report. We are still working on '24 and because we're working with a new audit company, we do have a meeting on Friday to talk about the status and see where we're at with that. But everything that's reported on here is audited funds as of FY '23 and taking into account all of the things that we had to reappropriate from '24 to '25. I'm anticipating at this point that we will have about a 20.96% fund balance when we finish with FY '24 and we take into account those reappropriations. Again, not final numbers, but we're working on the finals as quickly as we can. It's just a bit of a, a learning curve because we're using a new audit firm this year for the first time.
Our vote to, to cover healthcare costs several hundred thousand, is that in here?
That is in here. It does not show, like, you're probably accustomed to seeing it, but I took it into account when in the, the figures for the actual expenses for FY '24. So it does appear in the $45,332 figure at the top. So these are different than I presented to the last council meeting, but they've been updated with that $750,000 supplemental appropriation.
Are there other questions? Thank you. So, announcements of council meetings? Administration?
Thank you. Councilor, it has been canceled for this Wednesday. I think everybody got a notice in the email about it.
Finance?
Finance committee will be scheduled for Thursday, March 20th, across the hall in Boone and Bancroft. At this point, we don't have anything for a finance committee agenda, so stay tuned for that one. And then also, it was requested by Councilman Schwartz that I remind council that we do have a budget committee meeting tomorrow at noon here in council chambers.
Public safety? Michael?
We're scheduled for March 27th. I think on the calendar it shows that it's canceled, but I believe, yeah, February, not March. So we will, unless something happens, we don't have any agenda items, we will be March 27th at 4:00 p.m., please, anywhere.
And public works and planning, Spencer?
We are tentatively scheduled for Thursday, March 13th, 7:30 here in the council chambers.
Announcements? See none? Consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
An ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Sam Gaines Construction Incorporated in the amount of $17,610 for the South Country Club side path project.
Mr. Bangy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mottam. The, this contract would approve the construction of a, of a side path along the South Country Club Drive, basically from the fairgrounds, the South Country Club section, down to the Turtle Creek subdivision, a total length of about 1,600 feet. Project is funded at 78% by a TAP grant that was approved by this, by this council back in December of '23. And the remaining funds for the project will come from the, the grant matching category of sales tax H. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
See none? 2024-084?
An ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a right-of-use license agreement with Lincoln University pertaining to the restriction of vehicular access in the 700 and 800 block of Chestnut Street.
Mr. Bangy again?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Mottam. So, back in January of this year, Dr. Mosley, who's here with us, and Carlos Graham, came to the public works and planning committee and presented a request to have a daily closure of Chestnut Street through the main part of the campus. So basically, from Acheson Street at the top of the hill down to Dunkland Street. The proposal was to have the road closed during daytime hours, 8 to 5, and they would close it by means of gates or bollards. And I think since that time, gates have been chosen for that. There's been some discussions with public safety concerning access. I think some of those issues or all those issues have been addressed with kind of an automatic opening system that would allow for public access for emergency vehicles during the times that those, those gates are closed. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or as I mentioned, Dr. Mosley and Carlos are here and could perhaps answer them as well if you have specific questions.
Dr. Mosley, do a second?
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just now. Thank you. President Mosley, is that just for school time or is that, this could be 365?
It's only when school's in session. So in the summertime or provided there's no classes, on holiday, the gates will be open. Yes.
When do you anticipate if this is approved, do you anticipate, starting with this?
August, fall semester. We'd like to use the remainder of the semester, once you guys approve it, to get everything ordered and, and prepared and to get contractors in place to install the gates. We're gonna, we're gonna, our goal is to install wrought iron gates that swing open, that'll be very aesthetic, aesthetically pleasing to, to everyone. It'll take us a little bit of time to get that done. And then also, the, the goal is to give it that much time so that our neighbors in, in the Chestnut Street vicinity can become aware and get used to the plan of the fact that this is gonna take place.
John, would it help if we got this approved two weeks early?
From a planning standpoint, the sooner the better. Certainly, we, you know, our goal is to get this done. We've got the team in place now, just waiting to hit go. Once the, once the council approves it, so that we, we can begin the construction process. If you, if you've been by the 601 Jackson, if you see the gates that are, that are in 601 Jackson, it's gonna be something similar, maybe not in color, but those do, do take a little bit of time to manufacture. Again, we wanna make sure that this project is first class and the university sends us our funding to support it.
I just want to know, will there be signage informing people who, that this has taken place along, like, at the beginning of Acheson and probably at the Chestnut, just signage, letting people know?
Yes, ma'am, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that we're informing people that the changes are coming. You'll likely see the construction begin somewhere around June with preparation for it to be open in, in August. Also, it's gonna be clear signage on it to direct people the best alternate routes. We're, at the university, we're gonna, the board has authorized us to spend approximately a million dollars on asphalt around our campus. We anticipate that some people that are coming up Chestnut may choose to turn in by tow hall and circle campus that way. And so, we wanna make sure that we give all citizens, students, faculty, staff, and citizens the opportunity to ride on good streets when they, when they traverse campus. So that'll be taking place this spring. Those bids are due towards the end of this month, and so all of this work will be taking place in the summer of '25.
I just wanna say I support this because I, my office is on that campus. And coming down between founders and MLK, there's a mirror there, but I still feel like it's a high-risk area for accidents and for the students. So, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and vote on this tonight.
Second.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules? Objection, roll.
It would only, it would only fail with two objections, so without that, it leaves ready to go.
Okay, are we good to go? Okay, roll call?
I'll read the bill one more time and then we'll do a roll call. An ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a right-of-use license agreement with Lincoln University pertaining to the restriction of vehicular access in the 700 and 800 block of Chestnut Street. Roll call. Allers?
Yes.
Hosselton?
Yes.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Don't pass this.
We'll move to 2024-085.
An ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Article 8, Compensation Plan, Section 8-15, standby on-call status of the Personnel Policy Manual.
Okay, Mr. Buckley.
So, yeah, the Public Works Committee recommended this. Currently, there is a differential that's paid to bus drivers that is 50 cents an hour. And that is for the drivers that have a workday that exceeds 10 hours. Doesn't mean they're working a full 10 hours, but normally what they work is, full shift is 12 and a half hours. They come in the morning, they run their, their morning, their morning routes and then they take like a three and a half or four-hour break and then they come back. They're off the clock for four hours and they come back and get on the clock. So obviously, that's disruptive to people's lives. They may work an eight-hour day, but it's encompassing 12 or 12 and a half hours of their life. So, in order to compensate for that unusual schedule, historically, the city has paid an extra 50 cents an hour. We look back, last time that was adjusted, we believe may have been early 2000s. At one point, it was 25 cents, was up to 50 cents. It's not memorialized in, in the city handbook right now. So part of this ordinance would allow it to be adopted into the handbook. So really, it's, it's adopting it into the handbook, so we have it in writing in the definition of, of who's eligible, who gets it. But the committee is also recommending that this increase from 50 cents to $1.50 an hour. So currently, it's roughly about, for the 50 cents an hour, roughly came in about $9,000 against the general fund of what it cost last year for that. Keeping in mind that half of the, the additional, the total cost is about $18,000 cents an hour for all the people to get it, but half of the money comes from a transit grant. So for every dollar we spend, we get another dollar from the feds on that. So, to increase it, so from 50 cents to $1.50 is, you know, we are tripling the cost, you know, but we're only, city's only obligated to half of that cost. So it costs the city roughly another $18,000 out of the general fund to, 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 to.
Questions? Okay. Move on to 24-086?
An ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri modifying Chapter 26A, purchasing and finance of the city code.
Okay. Ms. Perry?
Thank you. This one modified Chapter 26A, which relates to purchasing and finance in the city code. Specifically, these changes relate to purchasing. There's a lot of cleanup in this recommendation. There is a section that has been newly added, and that's Section 3G. And it essentially outlines supplies and services that are exempt from the bid process. We have talked about some of these previously, but essentially, you wouldn't have competitive bidding or it wouldn't be required for any type of expenditures like accountants, attorneys, physicians, anything that essentially requires some kind of specialized knowledge or skill. And then also things like advertisement placement and proprietary subscriptions and utilities. Can I answer any questions?
Any other questions at this time? See none? We'll move on to bills pending. Bill 2024-079?
An ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Grinnell Engineering Resources in the amount of $68,600 for geotechnical investigation and design services for the Water Street stabilization project.
Mr. Bangy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Mottam. The, this bill would authorize a contract with Grinnell Engineering. We were looking to have them do some geotechnical investigations and ultimately, it's a design for the eastern part of the 700 block of Water Street. So Water Street is located up near the Missouri River Bridge. Cliff Street is the actual street that the house is front, but Water Street serves as the entrance to basically all our driveways and the backs of the properties. Part of that street had collapsed back in 2010. We did a project in 2011 that worked on the western end of the street with the hope that the eastern end would, wouldn't fail, but it ultimately has. And so, this would look to do a project that was similar to the project that we did 10 years ago or 12 years ago on the western end of the street. There isn't any funding that's been identified to actually do the construction. This project is simply to do the geotechnical, that geotechnical investigation and the design of that project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Roll call.
Hosselton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Don't pass this.
Bill 24-082?
An ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri regulating the operation of golf carts and other utility vehicles on city streets.
Chief Weldy?
I, I plan to place this on the informal calendar.
Need anything right now? Okay. Calendar? Yes.
Thank you very much. I don't know if I can do this, and Ryan, you might have to guide me in the correct procedure here, but since we're pushing this back a couple weeks since folks are out tonight, is there a way where we could get a fiscal note on this? And so some of the things I've been thinking about since we met is we're now bound under the $15 flat rate that we can charge to license. Could you provide us with what an estimate might be for an officer to get into a vehicle, go on-site and perform that service? So we could see how 50 or 100 licenses annually may impact your department? Think I could give you a really good answer, potentially. I mean, if, if we had to drive two blocks versus to the far west side of town, you know, there's gonna be gas costs. I mean, are you looking for just a, like, salary? Probably everything, all the salary and then the equipment and fuel. What's your total cost would be? I can try to get you close. It's, yeah, I'll, I'll try some numbers. Nothing that would take too long, just a ballpark, you know. Nothing that would take too long, just a ballpark, you know. Do I need to put that in any form of any motion to request that or to refine with a conversation? Okay, thanks.
What's Councilman Allers?
I'll ask the chief this and the rest of the council, if they want to, and we can discuss this later, but would it be appropriate, is there, to have the people bring them into the city at the police department, have them inspected on a trailer or something? I don't look, I don't think there'd be 50 or 100, honestly. I'm thinking, you know, maybe 10, tops, maybe.
That's part of it.
I don't want to give a number because you know it's gonna happen. It's gonna jinx me, and then we'll get 400 of them show up. But you know what I mean? Most of them can be trailered and brought in. That may be saving the cost. I don't, I know, I don't want to discuss this now, but I just thought I'd, I just, when you were talking about that, I just thought, well, maybe we could do that. Since they have to come in, we have to take our cars to get it inspected. I think if we need to get it inspected, it's.
I think that if you look at the substitute bill, there is a difference between them bringing it to us, we inspect it on-site, or if we have to go off-site, there would be another administrative fee for us going out to visit someone.
Yes.
Question, I'll probably answer, ask that again when this is brought up.
So the 15 is for registration, that's capped by state law, but we didn't see anything in the state law that would prevent us, you know, we're providing another service of going out to your residents and performing an inspection there, being able to read to cover costs, or that is.
No.
But that is a fairly unscientific number.
And that's part of the information trying to gather, that's why I placed it on the input.
I didn't click that on. Okay, appreciate you bringing that up.
All right. Moving on to the informal calendar, 24-06-7.
I'm gonna be bad on the informal calendar.
Okay, and that would mean we'll die on the informal calendar, get disappointed about, but the next council will take it up, they will. Resolutions. Resolution 24-32?
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson to apply for the Missouri Department of Natural Resources State Revolving Loan Program for funds under the Missouri Clean Water Law.
Yes, I'll continue. So you might remember several months ago, we had a resolution that was similar to this one that put my name on as the signer of documents related to our state revolving fund, which basically funds a lot of our sewer projects. So now that Kyle has come on, we've, we're changing that document so that he can sign off on those rather than myself. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Oseltan?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
Okay, and Resolution 24-43?
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson to apply for the Missouri State Transit Assistance Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Portem. The, this resolution would allow us to apply for a yearly grant to the state for transit funds. Last year, the grant was valued at $7,000. The exact amount of this year's grant is unknown until the state budget is passed, but this resolution would just simply allow us to submit our application for those grant funds. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Roll call.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Yep, all right, aye.
Oseltan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
Okay, is there any new business? The, I'm gonna, great, please.
We're the jury.
You need to read something first. Motion to adjourn.
Hold the weight, I'm down this meeting.
Second.
Go up the side.